All right, it is six o'clock. We call a meeting in order. Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Rob Rigdon.
Yes.
Mike Hancock.
Yes.
Brett Meadie. Laura Iverson. Alec Shada.
Yes.
Renee Philmyer.
Yes.
All right, if you'd stand and join us in the pledge. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, recognition of the open meeting log. Information on the wall, if you have any questions you can ask. Previous agenda, is there a motion to approve? Motions are second?
Second.
Any discussion? Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Mike.
Yes.
Brett. Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Okay, next item is the board minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 18th meeting? Some of them. Motion is second, any discussion? Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Okay, next item is the claims. Is there a motion to approve all the claims with the exception of the two EDLON service claims?
Second.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion? Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Laura.
Yes.
Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
And two EDLON service claims, one for 2725 and one for 1800. Second, Alex, second, discussion? Chris?
Laura. Yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Okay, moving on, we've got the treasurer's report. Any questions for the administration in regards to any of the information presented there? Okay. Move on to the administrative reports.
Good evening, everybody. For my report, I'm actually going to yield the floor to our school psychologist, Jen Johnson, and our school counselor, K-6 school counselor, Cindy Clepper. They're going to present tonight instead of my report because they're going to give us a little bit more of a detailed overview of what they've been working on for our social, emotional learning, and behavioral supports for kids in the elementary. So it's pulled up, our framework is pulled up on that screen there behind some of you, and I'm going to let them kind of just share in a nutshell what some of the things are that we've been working on for the past year and a half. A lot of the supports they'll talk about tonight are not necessarily new, but we just have more of a newly organized way to go through the process. What you'll notice, just a quick overview before they jump in on the specific social, emotional stuff, is our district's multi-tiered system of supports is a little unique in that we call them, call the tiers Tier 1, Tier 1 Plus, Tier 2, and Tier 3. So Tier 1 in any domain, whether you're talking about social, emotional, or math, or something else, is core instruction. So instruction that all kids get. Tier 1 Plus would be that core instruction and some sort of classroom interventions that could be a behavior plan, could be something else. Tier 2 is more of a specialized support. They'll talk about what that means for them. And then Tier 3 are special programs and services that often are outside of what most students have access to. So go ahead, take it away.
Well, I'm Jen, just for those, I'm Jen. I'm Cindy Clepper. I think last name. So at the elementary, K-5 is really what this like is implemented for, fully. Obviously, there's pieces of this that are happening at the middle school, high school, but like we've really been focusing on like really implementing this whole thing for K through 5. So to start out, like Tier 1, core instruction, every student gets a curriculum that I use, which is second step right now. So I go into classrooms every other week and do the lessons that every student gets. So those are on like problem solving, handling our emotions, careers, all of that kind of stuff.
Then Tier 1 Plus would be those interventions that a classroom teacher may implement. Those would be like your behavior charts, your behavior systems in the classroom, or if they just meet with a student maybe once a week just to do check-ins or check-outs, those would be Tier 1 Plus. Something they do a little bit different than what they do for everybody, put something done slowly in the classroom by the teacher.
And we have teammates and junior mates under Tier 1 Plus, just because like we didn't want to really label it as an intervention because it's not intended to be an intervention. It's intended to be for any student that wants to be in teammates or junior mates. So right now, we have like 52 or 53 matches for teammates, and I have around 30, right under 30, for junior mates. So we got quite a few elementary kids in that.
So once we start moving into Tier 2, we're looking at a little more individualized, a little more than the classroom teacher. So that might be Cindy's meeting with a group of students. It might be a small group. It might be individual, but there's some sort of counseling need. Or they're meeting with me, or we're doing a specific group. But what's different is it's one of us that's more specialized in behavior, working on that than the classroom teacher.
And also like that's really meant to be like short-term also. So like if kids need more longer-term interventions or more in-depth, then we move to Tier 3 where we refer out typically. So we have some really awesome programs that are through our county that we have been trying to like figure out ourselves the last couple of years exactly, like when can we refer kids to these things? Or families to these programs. And so there's like stuff through Saunders County Youth Services, like in-home therapy for families that is free through, because it's through grants. There is a lot of financial assistance. The RIDE programs through there for currency issues. What am I missing, Ben?
Oh, there's a lot. So actually, over the past year, year and a half, almost two years, these two have met with me once every three weeks. And we just kept stumbling upon more and more great resources in our community, specifically through Saunders County Youth Services, that we just didn't know about. And so that was kind of the nice part about the work that these two did is that we were able to kind of knock down that door and say, hey, what can you really offer our students beyond what we're already doing? And so then they provided a flow chart for us. And so now we really are utilizing those services better. So actually, that's LinkedIn here. And this is something that Amber Peal and's office put together for us. So now Cindy and Jen can go through, sorry, it's going to show up small, but they can go through and kind of follow the flow chart and look at lots of different, so like this list of bullet points is just one set. Lots of different types of programs that our kids have access to that, you know, a year ago, we didn't even know about a lot of those. And so Cindy is now busy doing a lot of referrals there, supporting families beyond what we can do during the school day.
And then we also have access to Blue Valley Behavioral Health through our youth assistance program to do some counseling services for free at the school for a short term. And then they can follow up and do long-term as needed. And then we also have contracted with Lincoln Family Service, and Cody Camp has provided as a licensed mental health worker, some services for our kiddos that are really high needs in terms of counseling supports. And then also, once we get there, if we need special programs and programming and services through Special Education Services for kids with behavior needs, we have those supports in place. And that might be me, that might be Cindy, it just depends on the individual needs of the student.
And then if we go back to Tier 1, just like I'm sure you guys have talked about in reading, doing screenings, we do a behavior screening three times, two to three times a year where we kind of take a big giant overview peek of kids and their social, emotional needs. It's through the same suite of assessments through FastBridge and, right, Josh Fastbridge? I'm like, they changed their name again today. And just kind of look at where our kids at in terms of individual needs, classroom needs, or even building wide needs in terms of, do we have the right core curriculum for them? Do we need to do something intensive in a classroom? Or do we need to focus at the student level? And that, that testing is done kindergarten through 12th grade. Kindergarten and first grade, the teachers just complete the assessment on the kids, and then second grade on up, it's teacher and student that completes the SABR's assessment. So it really gives us a good screenshot of like how students are feeling versus, you know, what teachers or us might see. And so we catch a lot of those kiddos that are like internalizing those problems and follow that through that screener.
So like I said, a couple of years ago, I came to these two and I kind of said, hey, here's the deal, let's be, let's be as strategic with how we are instructing our kids with social, emotional, and behavioral growth as we are with math and reading. And so this is what they came up with and what they're doing. And I just wanted to spotlight that, put a spotlight on that tonight because it's been a very good thing. And at this point, starting this fall, these two have met with every single individual classroom teacher in our, in the elementary school, and we'll do that twice a year forever now. Going through kid by kid, what are the supports that this child needs? And really working on, you know, we're not labeling a kid as a Tier 1 kid or a Tier 3 kid, but, but really approaching it from, what level of support does he need right now? And then hopefully, they can move back down in what we're doing for the classroom as of now. But we do have, like every school, a large number of kids who need more. So the strategy here is what I really wanted to spotlight and say thank you.
Any questions?
And really, like too, I want to say like our YAP program, for the first time ever, has a waiting list. Cody Camp has a waiting list all the time. So, you know, we have lots of services we can provide, but I mean, you, I'm sure you get read all the time more and more, like mental health is a high need right now. And so we are definitely seeing that all, all across the board, whether it's like us providing those services. You know, I can't keep up with the amount of kids in small groups, you know, I should be doing. But then when we refer on to those Tier 3, I mean, there's a waiting list for those kind of services too right now, which has never been before, so.
All right, questions? Thank you for coming. I appreciate very much. Dan, anything else, Dan?
Nope, thank you.
All right, Shelley?
Hi, good evening. You have my report. I spotlighted what we claimed for final financials this year, and then also what we will receive for IDA funding. And we utilize that for our preschool and non-public. I also included a graphic that shows how spend, sped funding is provided for schools. If you want more details, I can give that to you. Otherwise, it's divided into three areas. We have state reimbursement that we get for five to 21-year-old students. We have the local effort, or what we contribute locally. And then we have IDA funding. And again, that's what we use for preschool since Burt 5 is not reimbursable through the state. The one thing I guess to know about the local effort is it can't decrease. It has to be at least that much every year, or there has to be a reason for that exception. So we work with ESU 2 to do the final financials and then also for that IDA grant. As far as Head Start, we continue at full enrollment. Submitted the Head Start budget pretty much the same as it was in years past. We've completed our training and technical assistance plan, which goes along with the budget. And along with what Jen and Cindy presented about MPSS at the elementary, we also are utilizing the pyramid, which is just an extension of MPSS for our three-to-five-year-olds leading into their school age. Finally, one last thing to highlight. We are celebrating our para-professionals this month in each building. We are spotlighting a para-professional or two at each building every day. And they have, they get some small, we had some donations from Pizza Hut, Jeans Days, some chocolate. We also have had people bringing snacks. The admin team, though they don't know this yet, are contributing Friday for donuts for the staff. And just trying to make sure that our para-professionals know how much we really appreciate everything they do every day for us. Any questions? I think that's most I've ever talked about.
Questions for Shelley? All right, thank you, Shelley. Roberts?
Good evening. I'll try to keep mine a little shorter, Shelley. Just a couple, long list of dates and things there on mine. Wanted to highlight Jessica Snelling and Lily Ober being selected for All-State Choir. They'll spend three days this week down in Lincoln, on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday participating in that. Athletic final season honors are starting to come out. Autumn Iverson was selected in a second-team superstate and first-team Class B in softball. We'll start to get volleyball and football here in the coming weeks. So congratulations to all those students, and winter activities started today.
Questions for Robert? All right, thank you. Mark is not here tonight. Josh?
You, you'll have access to my full report there, and then an additional document, I think, we'll save until probably the action items that needed. That just supports the transition between the old 2014 ELA standards and the most recent version, so. ELA Element, K-12 has been meeting the last few months. We just held another meeting last week to kind of talk through some of those processes. 10th graders have started pre-ACT and should finish up this week as well at the high school. Elementary has been selected for MATE testing. This is, it will take place February 15th, but it's something that typically takes place every four years, and with COVID and some other things, the last few years, we haven't, we have not been selected for quite some time. It's a random sample of students in the fourth grade, and it's not, it's not the entire grade level, but it's just certain, they have criteria that they use to identify which students they're going to select. I also wanted to note, Wahoo Middle School Outdoor Survival Club, I think this is year four for that, for eighth graders, held their first meeting again on October 21st, and will have their second meeting on November 18th, and that's a collaborative with the Lower Flat North NRD and the Education Department there. So it's a really nice way to get kids and connected with nature. And they, we have kind of a series of six different programs that they go through, from camping to fishing to identification of predators, both two-legged and four-legged. So we have Sheriff Stupinoltz come in, and Mike Lubin comes in and talks about some of those things, like just what to be aware of when you're out in nature, possibly hiking or whatnot. And then this past week, I wasn't able to include it because it occurred on Friday, but our Southeast Community College held its, I don't know if it's quarterly, I suppose, advisory committee meeting. It was comprised of a lot of local education folk and then other kind of business people from the community. Really emphasizing a need to continue collaboration on creating more like job shadow and apprenticeship opportunities for students in the community and actually greater Saunders County area. So there's, there were a few ideas kind of tossed around in terms of local businesses starting to kind of create some opportunities that then could be shared with school districts in order to kind of funnel students into those areas when they show interest or, or a meet, you know, some sort of a passion or connection or whatever that might offer. So I guess it was, the main focus was about just providing opportunities for all students where, you know, some of the examples shared were like some, a certain parents might be able to call up a company because they have a connection there already. And then this would, this would, you know, kind of maybe provide more opportunities for more kids who, who may not have a family member that would be willing to do that, or, or even would know how to go about it. We'll keep you posted on that as it continues to move along.
Questions for Josh? All right, thank you, Josh. Brandon?
I might talk less than everybody this time, but I guess on, on the 11th, the one thing I would say, and I put all this stuff down there is for all the people that we need to thank, is my first experience having Bishop Newman for our Veterans Day. I thought it went really well. I was really, really impressed as far as collaboration between the music departments and everybody else involved. I thought Major Ryan Thompson did a really nice job, a little red dress, and I, I liked him a little bit well. Like Josh said, I think they wrapped up in classes with pre-ACT. We just have some, we have some makeup stuff for the kids who were absent to finish up. And then we, because of, because of change in the schedule, we look for finals to be Friday, or the 17th Friday, and then Monday and Tuesday. You can do it two a day on each one of those, or three, three, two, excuse me. And so talked, in our faculty meeting, talked about that, how we're going to address that, and ready to work towards getting the semester closed out.
All right, questions for Brandon? Okay, thank you, Brandon. Brandon?
All right, just a few notes here. State conferences this week will be going on Thursday. Right now, I have Brett, Renee, and Mike registered. If any of the other three want to go, make sure we register outside. I'll give them a call tomorrow. Just make sure you're wanting to go, just please let me know, and I'll make sure we have something in place at least. One of the sessions I'm going to highlight, there's an upcoming bill regarding school funding, property tax reduction. I mentioned that briefly in the past. If you are attending, I would suggest going to that one because it's going to be interesting. It's probably going to be packed. You'll have Troy Lava Holtz and Chip Kay from Columbus, along with the Chair of Education, presenting at that session. I do think it'll be well-attended. Foundation is going to recognize innovative education grant winners sometime soon. I think they've kind of narrowed in on who it's going to be. Applications were down this year as far as the number of applications received. I think, I think part of it is just finding the time to put it in, and part of it is it's becoming tougher and tougher to be innovative and not do the same thing over and over again. Mr. Galladay mentioned the calendar. I, I believe I'd emailed everybody on that 22nd of December. We use that as a staff date. The state has made us eligible for one, I think it's eight hours a quarter, to be able to utilize some time for staff PD without taking away from the time that we're working with. So we're going to utilize that 22nd. I will send a message out to patrons here pretty quick. Last thing, CMR work. We put out that advertisement for RFQs regarding the CMR. We will open those bids on Wednesday, open and consider, try to narrow in on finalists to interview Friday for a special board meeting a week from tonight to consider engaging in one of those CMR. Any questions, Chris? Do you want us to take actions as it's changing the calendar? No.
Okay, questions for Brandon? All right, thank you, Brandon. I don't see any communications. Next item is audience comments. Anything from anybody? All right, moving on, the board committee reports. Anything there outside of discussion around the building? Not, we'll move into the action items, district audit. Brandon?
Okay, we typically do this under an action item. You don't have to, so what you'll see the wording, we're going to accept the audit. As it's written, we don't really get to approve it. That's not our part. Dana Cohen Company completed our audit. Just like has been the case every single year, we have two items that are flagged, segregation of duties and internal controls because we don't have enough staffing. Most small schools are going to have these flags. They're pretty minor, though they are required to post them on a yearly basis. The big thing we try to do is we have multiple sets of eyes on financial accounts, transactions, deposits, and we have multiple signature lines on checks. So we're doing the best we can with it. I don't know that she has any concerns other than it's a yearly practice. Other items of note, the ending balance has been nearly the same the past six years. It's been within probably $100,000 for our six consecutive years, which means we're doing what we have to with our budget to maintain the balance where we want that to be going into the next year. Expenditures increased just under 3%, so we're still staying below that 3% threshold, even though we continue to add staff. I would say over half of that 3% increase in expenditures comes from special education. And that's not something we get a choice on. That's something we get a chance to educate a lot of kids, and we take advantage of it. And we are, I think, as responsible as we can do with our budget. So I was really happy with the way it came out. Do you have anything? Not to put you on the spot. I, it, it went as well as it's going to go, so.
It's a lot of stress.
Any questions in regards to the audit from anybody for Brandon? If not, is there a motion to accept the audit report from Dana, Dana Cohen Company as presented? Motion is second, any further discussion? Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to a resolution to approve the formation of the Saunders County Education Agency, an inter-local agency agreement between law and public schools and ESU Number 2.
As, as we worked through this, trying to find a way to finance a building project, previously, we formed a facility corp to examine some several avenues that we could go down. In working with Mike Rogers and Gilmore Bell, along with Steve Williams and E.A. Davidson, found another potential avenue that we can travel in order to help finance a building project. At this time, I think I'm going to turn it over to Mike Rogers, who's in attendance. To present on kind of where we've been because it's been a pretty quick trip. It has things that changed slightly. Also in attendance is Ted Turk and ESU Number 2. They, as part of this inter-local agency, they considered that this afternoon, and they've approved it as being a part of that. So now it's up for our consideration. So Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, everybody. Good to see you again. Mike Rogers with Gilmore Bell in Omaha. So as was mentioned, we, the district formed a nonprofit corporation earlier in the year, which was going to be used as part of financing plan for, for this project. Since then, some things have happened, and we have, my firm has done a financing using a slightly different method. It's still rooted in the same statutory power that the district has to lease or lease purchase project. So it's utilizing the same legal authority that the district has, but instead of a nonprofit corporation, it would be forming an inter-local agency, which is the Nebraska Interlocal Cooperation Act gives the school district the power to enter into contracts with other political subdivisions. I'm sure you have quite a few interlocal agreements for a lot of different things. Typically, they are just ways for you to get services from other political subdivisions and pay money for those services. The Interlocal Act also has the ability, or gives the school district and other political subdivisions the ability to form a new administrative entity under the act, which then is a separate entity of separate public body, corporate and politic under Nebraska law. So you're, it's like if two individuals form an LLC or a corporation, this is how two political subdivisions can come together to form a new entity under Nebraska law. And when that happens, if it doesn't happen that often, because then you have a new board, a new organization that you have to manage. But when you do create one, under the Interlocal Cooperation Act, that new entity has separate powers that are distinct from either of the two members. It also has all of the powers of the two members. And so it's, it's a pretty dynamic sort of entity that, that is formed. And the idea here would be to use that entity to do a financing for this project instead of the nonprofit. For federal tax purposes, you gain some advantages. This is, my tax partners would love this idea because they, using a nonprofit entity is a little more tricky under the tax code with tax-exempt financings and using a, this is effectively a governmental entity, and that's a much easier entity to manage for, for federal tax purposes. So that's a much easier entity to manage for federal tax purposes. So, that's positive. And there are other benefits under Nebraska state law as well with respect to property tax exemptions and sales tax exemptions and that sort of thing. You don't have some of the complexities of a nonprofit corporation on those types of issues. So, that's the short summary. I don't know if I left key things out that, or if there are questions, I guess.
So, why, when we met over a month, two ago, why did all of a sudden come, just now Friday, right? Friday's kinda weird?
Right. We met probably a week ago and then it all got kind of put together where I could share.
So, why did it change? What was the biggest reason? Tell me the pros and cons of why we don't stay with our nonprofit reform going into its interlocal agreement.
Sure. So, the main ones are the ones I mentioned. Property tax exemption is clearer under the Interlocal Cooperation Act and the federal tax aspects of financing are cleaner under, with an interlocal agency. And that's because it's a governmental entity. For both of those reasons, it's because it's a governmental entity instead of a nonprofit corporation. That's, those are the biggest ones and...
You just didn't know about it until?
No, I knew about it. It's less common. I think using nonprofit corporations for financings like this has been around since the 1950s and 60s. In fact, the nonprofit corporation that was formed is called a 6320 corporation in the public finance industry because it's following a revenue procedure, 6320, which was, came out in 1963. So, it's rooted in the 1955 tax code instead of the 86 code. So, it's been around for a long time. The other one is less frequently used for school districts. It has been used in Nebraska for things like regional landfills. We've created interlocal agencies to finance regional landfills for public safety communication systems, so like 9111 communication systems for cities and counties. It has been used by school districts and cities for recreational facilities in the past. Those are, but not for school buildings to educate kids for school districts. So, it was a less obvious choice. The traditional approach and the more obvious choice is the nonprofit corporation. This one is less obvious and so I, it hadn't been used for a school building before August of this year. And so, it's, it has been used in this way before. So, it's an innovative approach to a financing like this.
So, then the nonprofit is dissolved?
That would be the idea. You wouldn't necessarily need to have it anymore and so you'd probably dissolve it or something.
But this isn't the first time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, where else?
Grand Island Public Schools has did a financing earlier this year for this. ESU five and Beatrice Public Schools formed an interlocal agency last week and plan to do a financing to construct a new elementary school building for Beatrice Public Schools. So, it's, there have been dozens of interlocal financings done using this vehicle. It's just a different combination and, yeah, it's a slightly different approach to this project. Again, using the school district, same powers the school district has to lease a building. It would be a lease of the building instead of a lease purchase. That's one key distinction as well. And, but from, in talking to DA Davidson about the financing, from their perspective, it's about the same in terms of finding a bank to do the financing. So, that's, there are a lot of things that you would think about and worry about and evaluate and we ran through a lot of those questions. And if those things are the same or similar, then clarifying some of the other complexities seems like a prudent direction to consider.
What local agencies did Grand Island, did Beatrice Public?
The ESUs, both cases.
Both ESUs.
And that's what, I mean, one of the things in order to form an interlocal agency like this, it's for the mutual benefit of the members. So, the benefit to the school district here is obvious. The benefit to the ESU is they get, their mission is to support kids in their service area. But they also, so new facilities and updated, modern facilities are helpful for that, but they also deliver services in these facilities. And so, they'd be able to have newer facilities to deliver those services and, you know, which may provide better outcomes for what they do and may provide some efficiencies for them. So, it's not as significant a benefit, but certainly a benefit for them as well.
You said the difference is lease purchase and lease. So, we're leasing with, so at the end of the lease?
Yes, excellent question. So, the lease purchase financings, this is under revenue procedure 6320. One of the rules is that at the end of a lease purchase financing, the property has to automatically transfer to the school district. And that's a rule because for tax exempt financings, tax exempt financings can only be done by governmental entity. And so, the IRS said, well, we'll look through and look past this nonprofit corporation as long as title transfers at the end of the lease purchase financing. So, that's the significance there. A lease is different and can be different under federal tax rules because it's a governmental entity during the financing. So, there doesn't have to be an automatic transfer at the end. In this one, we would not set it up to have an automatic transfer at the end. The idea is that you would have a lease with a seven-year term or less that would renew each year so it would extend for another year each year. And the lease revenues is what the interlocal agency would use to make payments on its obligations to whoever its lender is. And so, then there would not be an automatic transfer at the end of the interlocal agency's financing. And at the end, if there's no financing, if there are no obligations of the interlocal agency, after it pays off its financing, then that board can decide what to do with the facilities. The resolution in front of you has, and the interlocal agreement in front of you, has three members of its board appointed by the school board and two members of its board appointed by the ESU. So, the school district would have the majority on the interlocal agency's board, which should give some comfort to the school district as to what might happen with that building at some point down the road whenever the interlocal agency has satisfied all its obligations with respect to financing.
So, how many board members total?
Five.
So, the school district has three and then ESU or whatever has two?
Right.
Question in regards to financing from the school's perspective. We're still limited to our dollar five.
Correct. And this entity does not have the power to levy taxes. So, the interlocal agency would not levy taxes. It would only make payments from the lease, payments from the school district, which have to be within the power of it. Also, the ESU would not be obligated with respect to any of those, the obligations of the agency, the ESU would not be on the hook for any of it. And in fact, the statutes give them protection, give the members of the interlocal agency broad protection for, from the liabilities of the interlocal agency. So, the district is obligated to make payments under the lease, but the ESU would not be obligated either. Certainly an important point for that.
What other questions?
What will be the responsibilities of the interlocal agency board?
What will be the responsibility of the board?
Right. What is their purpose? What kind of decision making will they be doing? Responsibilities they're carrying out at center?
Sure. They will need to, obviously, they will own the project and make sure that the lease with the district is of sufficient size for revenues to be produced to make its payments to whoever its lender is. So, it'll have a responsibility to make sure, it will approve the financing with whoever their lender is that DA Davidson finds for the transaction. It will enter into the lease with the school district and make sure that the revenues from the school district continue to come in to make payments on that financing. And if there are problems down the road, we expect it to jump in and it'll figure out how to resolve those problems. I think the, my expectation is the interlocal agency would defer to the school district with respect to design and construction of the projects. Like most lease projects, the tenant needs to make sure that the facilities that they're leasing, that there means, so that would be my expectation, which I would not expect the interlocal board to be managing how construction runs or what the design is for this building. Payments for construction would come from the interlocal agency. There's likely to be a trustee that will hold the loan proceeds. When the interlocal borrows money, it'll leave it positive into an escrow sorts with the trustee for dispersment of those funds as construction progresses. So, an authorized officer from the interlocal agency would likely be the one to sign off on those payments to, for construction of the project. That would've been similar with the nonprofit as well. It'll function similarly to what the nonprofit would've done, but it'll have, you know, fixed meetings will be open to the public, it'll be separate, the means act, it'll need to have a separate budget under the Nebraska Budget Act. So, it'll have some administrative functions that it will continue to navigate each year and will have to meet the lease handling for those administrative purposes.
What stage in the process does the lease usually get signed by?
Usually at or before the financing is done. And the reason for that is, well, there are a lot of reasons. But one of the main ones is a lender for the interlocal agency is one that wants to know that there's a lease in place so that revenue is coming in to the interlocal agency to make the payments on financing for the interlocal agency. So, yeah, at the time, the financing process, you know, I would expect typically it's at the same time, sign a lease and have the financing close at the same time. That's what I would imagine.
So, I spelled it. Maybe I missed this on the board. So, we appoint three members or is three of our board members?
You appoint three members. This board would appoint three members to the interlocal agency board.
Well, it's not, it's not, can it be board members?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the Interlocal Act is flexible. It doesn't dictate who serves on that board. So, the resolution in front of you tonight actually has, will ask you to name three individuals to serve on the interlocal board.
And just for reference, and I'm not asking for this, trust me, Dr. DeTurke, this afternoon they appointed a board member and you, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If there are no other questions, is there a... You gotta read it. You have to read it before or after. There's a motion in a second.
If you do a motion in a second, then I would name who they are so I can read it into it.
Okay, discussion around who the appropriate three people for that board?
We, is the discussed already?
No.
Who the three are?
Okay.
And zero discussion on that.
Okay.
But I'm aware of it anyway.
Well, we're asking people to be on some papers ahead of us. They haven't been asked. So, how do you put people on there besides board members?
Might prevent what we need to be three board members.
Renee, did you be willing? And Mike, I wouldn't appoint anyone other than board members.
Why would you? That's why.
I think we've got to maintain some.
Well, heck, yeah, because we're the ones that are getting voted in to make the decision. So. Laura, you wanna do it?
Um, I'd like to.
Okay. Alex?
You want it, Mike?
Brandon? Brad, do you have any?
I absolutely find, I'd be happy to do it, but I'm also fine not doing it.
So, Renee, Laura, Brad. Alex, you okay with that?
I'm fine.
Mike, you okay with that?
I'm okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution with those three names?
So, move?
Motion in a second. Brandon?
All right.
Read before we have any further discussion.
... resolved by the Board of Education. The Board has adopted the county school district 0039 law on public schools for the district as follows. Section one, orders review the need and desirability of additional and improved education facilities at the district and hereby find and determine that it is in the best interest of the district to join the education service unit. Number two, ESU two, to provide for the creation of an interlocal agency pursuant to the Interlocal Cooperation Act for the joint ownership of certain education facilities. Section two, Interlocal Cooperation Agreement presented in this board is hereby approved in substantially the form presented. The President of the Board is hereby authorized to execute an Interlocal Cooperation Agreement created in Saunders County Education Agency where such changes in amendment to said agreement shall be determined by the President of the Board. Section three, the Board hereby appoints the following individuals to serve as the district's representatives on the Board of Directors, Saunders County Education Agency: Renee Plum, Renee Feldmeyer, Laura Iverson, and Brett Eadie. Such individuals should serve as directors of such agency under the terms of Interlocal Cooperation Agreement generated by Saunders County Education Agency adopted this 15th day of November, 2021.
Further discussion? Hearing done. Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Mike?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Mike, thank you.
Great.
Dr. DeTurke, thank you very much. Appreciate the work with the ESU two as well. Okay, moving on to the English language arts standards. Josh?
Yeah, I mean, this process has kind of come up in past board meetings as well, but the state adopted, formally adopted new ELA standard on September 2nd, 2021. Our ELA committees at kindergarten through 12th grade members have had a chance to lift those over. I think historically, the board, we've been in a position where we just formally adopt those core curricular areas standards, noted in math or science. In this regard, my recommendation would be that the board approve those standards. I've included another, not only the actual standards themselves, but also kind of a key shift in standards, a recommendation for the reorganization. of a key shift in standards with a, a recommendation for the reorganization of the old standards from the rationale why. Just to highlight a few key points, um, and, and they separated out a few areas, um, in the past where it was, it was quite vague, uh, or the, or the standard might've included a laundry list of things. Uh, they've really tried to emphasize those, uh, more at by-grade level or within a department area that, uh, those things, where those things would be addressed significantly. Um, an increase and ask for text complexity to be a, a strong, uh, consideration, uh, during the process where we're, uh, instructing students in, uh, in past years, I would say, even, uh, past material sets, there's been a lot of emphasis on skills, on development of skills and, uh, like identifying the main idea of details or being able to summarize the texts that you read. Uh, those skills, uh, by themselves don't really carry a lot of weight if the appropriate complexity of text is not there. So if we have a fifth grader who's practicing reading the main details at a third grade level, it doesn't really jive. So the, none of that was in the old standards and none of those, uh, kind of considerations for text complexity. So not necessarily anything different that you would see huge shifts for us that we're making, but just the wording within the standards, um, in that regard has changed. And then production arriving, there's, uh, a bit more, uh, a bit more specificity related to the standards, um, with regards to grammar, writing, and whatnot. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to chat either now or later about some of that as well, so.
Any of the changes that were made surprising to you, not, not comfortable with?
No, no. And, and staff, I think, from what I've heard from staff, and I, I think the principals could speak as well, they're more comfortable with the standards. Like they were happy that they were a little bit more, um, specific, a little bit more detailed, um, in terms of, you know, maybe where they weren't the past.
Josh, from a parent's perspective, will parents see any difference in what comes home if they're helping their kids with homework or looking at the materials they're going through? Will they, or there'll be a notice?
That's a great question. Um, we, so we're just in kind of the initial starving of that. I would say for sure next year there will not be any large, I mean, I would not anticipate through the rest of this year or even next year, any large changes in the, in what we're doing. Uh, but it will be something that the committee will look at as we move forward with, uh, just reviewing material sets as we always do at the end of the, kind of coincides with the standards adoption process. So, um, at this point, no. At least through the next, the rest of this school year and next year, there won't be a lot of big changes. We are working on some things where organizationally, um, just vertically from kindergarten through twelfth grade or kindergarten through s- fifth grade, where we're looking at, uh, trying to clean up some things this summer, just, uh, with some new signs of reading training, things that have been taken place, just, you know, sequence or teaching letter names versus sounds and what order do we teach those things in. So some of those things will look different, but from a parent's perspective, there should not be a lot of change.
And, and when the curriculum changes like this, when it's time for the implementation, yes, we're going to change these things, do we communicate with parents about that?
So we, so we, um, in the past have, uh, I mean, it depends, I guess it would depend on what it is. We've not, um, generally done any like ser-, you know, survey information or whatnot that we, that we would send out regardless of selection. Um, we're always open to, to input and feedback when it comes to making those choices. Um, generally the committee, when, as those committees meet, um, you know, we start with the re-, with best practice, you know, evidence-based, um, uh, research, you know, supported processes and, and align those through. And then at that point, we might look at, we might look at or gauge new materials and see where they're at. Uh, we're also wholly considering what we already are using during that process. So it's never, it, we never go into a thinking that we're fully just abandoning whatever it is that we already have. So, but we don't, we don't have a formal process right now where we do parental advisory committees or other things, uh, when it, when it comes to having selection materials.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking more along the lines, not of having, allowing parents the feedback because you guys are the, the experts, right? Really more just that communication of, hey, you may be used to seeing this.
Oh.
And going forward, this is what your kids are going to be bringing home and how you might need to help them and this is going to be what it is.
Absolutely, that is a huge part of, that would be a huge part of that, of that process when we change like that.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions for Josh? If not, is there a motion to approve the English Language Arts Standards as presented? So moved. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Alex?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, facility projects, somebody, Brandon?
Committee, anything you guys want to share?
Still working with BBH, uh, trying to come up with solutions. Uh, they've done really good work, trying to get it narrowed down a little bit. As soon as we can get a CMR approved, they'll get in on the process and, and fight to it even further.
Okay. Personnel, I don't see anything. So which are the items for the next regular meeting? Well, first of all, we do have a special meeting next Monday. Go ahead.
Can I ask a question on the personnel piece?
Sure.
Are we having any luck hiring on a pair of professionals for, uh, the new full-time? Where, where are we on hiring?
Yeah. So as far as hiring pairs, I'll let Shelley speak to that. Typically she does more of that, although we've both been kind of teaming up on everything lately. But as far as our open position for our special education, the new special education teacher position, we have interviews scheduled for November.
And that's supposed to be a, a twenty-twenty-two, January twenty-two?
They'll start in January.
Start in November.
So, um, I would say as far as applicants for that job, again, given the time of year that we're hiring, we knew it'd be fewer applicants, but the quality of applicants is, feels good.
And how about the pairs?
Any luck actually? We have had, um, a couple applicants. Right now, we're kind of in a holding position, just dependent on the position that we're hiring. But we've had some luck getting some new people in this, uh, and, uh, they're, you know, quite a lot. So, um, have a couple approved, um, with background checks and availability and are working hopefully by the end of this week, having a couple. So, um, better, it's better. So we'll take that.
Better's better than worse.
Better is good.
Yep.
How about on the bus driver side? Are we making any progress? Are we going backwards?
I sh- I shouldn't say that. Are we making progress? Yes, we have at least one in.
The works.
The works.
For activities.
Um, so we're not going backwards, but we're not making that much progress.
Actually, I'm just going to be kind of different than strategy, but you know, like for best of all, there's road board games. You might have to work at, but instead of sending a substitute together and using pants as a sub option, you know?
I think our, our biggest problem is that we have enough drivers to drive routes we currently have, but then when you add activities into it, the driver has to lead to go to an activity, well, then you've got to cover that route. All of our drivers are driving multiple, multiple routes. I mean, we have some that are driving six, seven routes a day.
And the hard thing is when you consider, we have like six main routes, maybe. But when you throw in the ESU trips, the Omaha trips, the.
The in-town special.
The in-town special education. It becomes cumbersome and you move one chess piece and all of a sudden you've got to move three or four around to make that up.
Okay, maybe you thought, I, I know there was maybe some discussion on getting some teachers, coaches, potentially.
We have some. Now.
I think the fear that I hear amongst just people that talk about the community is, I'm afraid to sign up because of them calling me all the time, meaning, except because there's a huge student, it's more dependent on me.
I think that's true of substitutes in the classrooms, too. I think you hear that, too.
Can't they just say no?
Yes, they can. And they, and they do. Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we're at ready. And we continue to.
And teachers, are we doing our teacher?
We're okay.
Except for maybe today. Very good. Thank you.
All right. We've got a meeting next Monday to presumably approve a CMR. Um, that means at six o'clock here. Um, the items for the next regular meeting, um, should be a lot of facilities. What other items? Oh, yes, we'll start. Well, we will, we will do Brandon's evaluation. I will do that information setup.
I will need to get you guys a letter of intent. Coming back.
Yep. I will send the evaluation stuff tomorrow.
Um, we'll probably have at least one to consider next month. I don't anticipate a lot of changes from legal, uh, until this next session gets going. So, January.
Okay. Any other items? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, opposed, in favor, in the chair.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
Chris, thanks, give us a second.
Okay, so I didn't invite the, the.
She was the one that said it.
She did, yeah, because I was back after I called the positive. And then I looked at her like, yeah, I didn't say, I didn't invite.